There we go. Okay.
Okay. I'd like to call the North Branford Board of Education Special Meeting Budget Workshop Number Two to order at 7:05 PM. Roll call.
Chairman Papa Holzer.
Here.
Vice Chair Nafrio.
Here.
Secretary Siena.
Here.
Janet Bosalma.
Here.
Zachary Canada.
Kim Dawson.
Mayor Victoria Alonso.
Here. Salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You are the agenda.
Thank you. And what?
You guys are the agenda.
You have the paper coming, so.
Oh, do you need?
No, we're good. As a result of the first budget workshop and some of the charges that were brought forward by the board, Martha is going to pass out the new budget booklets with the changes to the formatting and some of the things that we discussed. Also tonight, we're going to give you the comparison and data with the regional scores and the cost differentiation with the per pupil expenditure. We're also going to give you a three-year projection, and we are also going to give you our prioritized list of our capital projects with some hot off the press updates. So, that being said.
Can I make a request? Whenever we talk about capital with anybody, can John come?
Well, I think you're going to be riveted when you hear what he has to say tonight.
I just don't want to ever have a capital discussion without him there.
Yeah, so it'll, I think, be enlightening. So that being said, we're going to start with the new updated packet that you have in front of you with those changes.
Okay.
Obviously, I'm not going to have Ms. Vaughn read all of the, just the things that you wanted, that we can speak to.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
So you want to just see the changes?
So you can see your changes.
Yes.
Yeah, that's it.
Page nine.
I'll see.
Of course.
Why, you need some reading tonight? Riveting reading?
So I just clarified Fund 25 and excess cost funds down at the bottom for you.
Yep, thank you.
Based on our conversation last time.
Yep.
On page 10, I did indicate that the year-to-date balance of 445, 702 is made up of both expenditures and incomparances, so it will differ from any balance that is over at the town. Just to remind you that our staff accountant does balance on a monthly basis to the town's books directly with their accountant.
Okay. So, just, so did you not give the town council the most updated version because we didn't have it first?
Yes.
Correct.
That's why I said that at the meeting.
Yeah.
Because the other members hadn't gotten it.
Gotcha.
I wanted you to get it first.
Page 11, we just did some formatting changes to the slide. We took out the word possible and changed the slide background. Let's see, page 13, down at the bottom, I just indicated that they were athletic coaches. Before that, it just said coaches, so just to make it more clear. Let's see. Just to read, just to, I will actually change this again in the morning based on a conversation earlier, but just so that you know, if you take the $1.660,000 and you remove the benefit number of 446078, and then an additional $27,000, which represents health insurance for the two new positions, you will come up with the $1.874 instructional, so we will make that change in the morning.
Or put the breakout in, Martha, so they can see the breakout and how it aligns. Do you know what I mean? Like, if you're looking quickly?
You mean like the math?
Like the math. Yeah, so you can see it, right? Because if you're looking quickly, you're going to expect it to align.
We are.
Oh, 15 and.
14 in the new packet, 15 in the old.
14 and 15.
So 15 in the new packet, when we were at the town council a little earlier this evening, there was a question as to why the salary increase here on page 15 is different than the salary increase on page 16, so it's just the way it's broken out.
So if you, we'll discuss that, you can do that on each page, so it's crystal clear.
Right.
Yeah, like asterisk it and then put the math at the bottom with that asterisk that matches, so there's a connection, and when you see that, you know what I mean? Because you're going to look at it unless you're doing the math in your head.
Now I got it.
Because there's going to be seven more of them, I think, maybe more. I can't count, but you know what I mean.
Yes. Let's see. It's all the same. Page 22, I added a slide for the business teacher, just a quick narrative on that since it was missing from the first one.
Yep.
Page 23, added the custodial position.
Yep.
And page 24, the track and field coaches.
Perfect. There was a typo, remember the two?
Yes, I did change that.
Did you change it?
Yes.
All right.
All right. Let's see, that's all the same.
Okay.
There is a brand-new page 31, so this is looking ahead next year and then two years out, so it's a three-year snapshot. So for salaries, I used all of the contracts that I had, you know, going out, and then my best guess.
Okay.
For benefits, I used 8% because that seems to be the trend.
The trend.
And then for the other lines, I used anywhere between a 2.5% to a 4% increase based on what I thought, with the exception of transportation, because we have the DAPSO contract for that. So as you'll see, for 24, 25, I'm estimating 4.24%, and 20, I'm sorry, oh, the dates are wrong there, it should be 25, 26 at the end, I will fix that, should be 4.42%.
I think that's just good to see, to like have a number with it, like percentage, so we're like all warmed up.
And you know what I think is interesting also is that if you look at those two years, the 4.2 and the 4.4, if you were to look at this year's current budget, line is the hole that we talked about, we would be at about 4. something percent, which is obviously much more palatable than the number that's.
That's not palatable?
That's not.
That we're presenting.
And then finally, our capital projects, which is the second to the very last page, we did sit down as an administrative team and prioritize them, so you'll see that number one and number two stayed the same. Number three is the auditorium lobby.
Can I have a quick question about our track? Is it true that our track is like short a lane or is that like an urban legend?
There's different lanes on different tracks where if you're running competitive meets on, they add two lanes. So most are six. The ones that have eight lanes, you could run a state class meet, like a college meet. So most of the high schools have the traditional six lane. So we're not missing a lane, we just don't have.
The extra two?
The extra two, which makes you then qualify to run state meets and like a college track.
So we could run local.
Oh, gosh, yeah. Everything is fine, we just can't host a state qualifying meet. And usually, we go to New Haven, to the complex, Floyd Little, or we would go to a college Wesleyan or something, that's where they hold the meet.
Yeah, okay. I'm just curious, sometimes you don't know what's fact.
So I just want to speak to the capital funding prioritization. We met the other day as a team, we all sat and went through what we thought had the biggest impact on students and community. The track was one, the first thing we thought, everyone uses that, it's a dire need, above key.
Right.
Especially with what's going on with the new high school. The outbuilding for storage, we're really shy on storage, and this would give us the opportunity to put our football team out there in a locker room, in an outbuilding, store everything there, keep them out of and closer to the playing field, which would be advantageous, plus have climate-controlled storage. Right now, we have five of the steel boxes that are not climate-controlled, we get mold, we have to throw a majority of this stuff away after a couple of years because it goes hot to cold, humid, you get mice in those things. So the auditorium lobby floor, that was something that has been going on for a couple of years, we've talked about that. That's, we think we have everything under control with that. I'm going to have John speak to some of this, but locker room is a ripout at Totucket, it's not being used, it's ideal for storage, but we just need to get rid of the outdated old 40-year-old lockers that are no longer used, clean up the floors and the walls, and we have really a great storage area.
Are you going to wait until the girls are done using that as their basketball court?
No, it's the locker room.
Right, but where are they going to go?
They don't, well, they'll still use it.
Oh, okay.
But a lot of times, all our teams come dressed in uniform, and they change, and then come to that facility to play there, and they don't even use the locker rooms. And they're filled with band equipment and other things now, right, Joe? Mr. Modio?
Yeah, right now, it's primarily storage.
For band equipment?
Yeah, no, I just meant like, the high school's going to be using that next year.
Not that gym.
Which gym are they using?
It's too small, they're going to use Jerome.
They're going to, okay, that was my question. I wasn't talking about the littles, I was talking about the bigs.
No, it has to be 50 by 94, the only qualifying gym we have is Jerome.
Okay, perfect.
So.
Now my question is answered.
Number five, John, could you approach the bench? Raise your right hand. So we just had a conversation about capital, and I want you to explain what you just explained to me when I called you. And I said that the paving money was in last year's budget, what happened to that project? And if you could explain it.
The town council refused our request for paving last year.
Do you have documentation?
I'm sure if we go back in minutes, we'll find it.
So in the 20, in the 2022, 2023 school year, we requested paving and it was denied.
Yep, and the reason why they told me was the bids that I received was not contracted on the state bid list. They told me to go back and re-bid it by contractors on the state bid list.
Doesn't Fran usually do the paving?
What's that?
Does Fran Marola do the paving, or no?
No, they wanted us to bid it out ourselves. So we approached Mizonno, who's a town business.
I remember this.
Paying a new high school, and Mizonno gave me a quote of $150,000 to do everything we needed done. When I contacted three vendors on the bid list, the quote went up to $250,000, and they told me, we cannot pave this summer by the time you want to open school, we're all too busy. So I dropped it because it was higher than the request we originally requested.
So what I'm going to need by our next meeting is I'm going to need those bids that you received that were over 250, I need Mizonno's bid, and I need the town council's denial of the paving.
And you also had conversations with Fran Marola?
I had conversations with Fran, because Fran had no problems having Mizonno do the job, he gave us a fantastic bid, and then when I talked to Fran about it, he goes, okay, we'll look into people on the bid list, because there's guys that Fran uses, and Fran's like, put in $250,000 because their prices are out of range, their prices are higher than Mizonno.
Well, if that was the case, though, then why did we only put in $100,000 again if bidding was 250,000? If we were getting bids that were.
Because we only put Jerome Harrison in this year.
And more other pavings?
Totucket Valley.
Both of them, right? So you cut it.
Both of them were in last year.
So.
So in order to try and get, Jerome Harrison is in the worst, Jerome Harrison is the original paved job.
Yeah.
And that's cool. So he's 25 years old, okay? So we had more bad paving at Jerome than Totucket. Totucket, we only have the gym side back, so rather than putting in a quote for both schools again, we put in a quote, we put in a request for Jerome Harrison.
So just because we're going to have to go, and if we're not going to remove that item from the list, we're going to have to have documentation.
Right, because we were told that it was, the money was allotted to us, and I thought, I remembered that 90,000.
Well, it's not that the money wasn't allotted, we were denied the request to pay.
The bid request didn't come in.
They denied the request last year for paving.
Because we had to go to the bid list, when we went to the bid list, we could have.
And not a state.
Yeah.
Right, and they're not, Mizonno's not a state?
He's not on the state bid list, but he's willing to give us a town discount.
I get it.
It's a town business.
Right.
I always go to town businesses first.
Yeah, I understand, I understand that.
So that's good clarification.
But when you say last year, you do mean 2022, 2023, right?
Yeah.
This school year.
Last year's budget, which we would have paved during last summer.
Right, in this current year.
Current year, okay.
Because if you, you get bids now if you want guys to pave during summer time.
Right, yeah.
If not, if you, you have to tell them they have the job, and by July 1st, they start mobilizing, because every school system in the state is asking guys to pave in summer time.
Yeah, exactly.
In the two months.
Just collect that documentation, because I don't want to take it off the list if we have documentation, just keep us posted.
Now, like I said, if you go back to the minutes, the town council meeting minutes, it's going to be in there, and they said that they don't accept this bid, and they go.
Yeah.
We'll do research on that for you, obviously.
And there was some requests, there were some requests that came out of this meeting, they wanted to know about the lighting at where?
The rebates. It was.
So, let me segue into.
Hold on, I have a question on the paving. If this is a safety issue, dangerous and a liability, why is it number five on our list of important things here?
Well, you could argue any one of them for a risk of liability, meaning the track, someone could fall onto the track, because there's grass growing through and there's cracks in it. The auditorium lobby floor is pitching in places.
For number one, though, for the track, shouldn't that be specified?
Well.
I don't think it really matters, because they pick and choose, it doesn't matter what order we put them in, they get to decide. They're not going to say, we'll do one, two, and three.
Okay.
They're going to say, the only one we're willing to give you is number four. So it doesn't.
I asked the prioritization just because I wanted to know, like, curiosity, what was important, you know, like, if we ever have any extra something or other.
So the last.
This is the one part of the budget that they have line item.
Right, control.
Control over.
And really, like, we could argue any one of these, so, and this, the last one is the updating of the building management, those are big capital items that we would have to be in communication with the council, and there's, you know, there's some of the monies that are in the town right now, they didn't expend the $4 million that the town gave, and they were doing a number of projects. We put in for the manufacturing, we then knocked it down from our original request. These are some of the things that could get picked up in that grant.
Yeah, we also had the upgrade to lighting in this building that we had put in, and there were a lot of capital improvement projects this year, so we were asking for it, so we had to quote for upgrading the lighting in this building, that's not in there.
But the schools are the priority, we're okay here.
A lot of safety priorities took precedence.
Yeah.
You know, and, you know, the outbuilding, we're spending money because the equipment we're storing in there, we're vending out, throwing away and replacing, and we're paying rental on the trailers.
It's good money over bad.
Right.
Good money over that. Same thing with the energy management system, and those things save money in the long run.
Yeah, you just have to get there.
So that's the list of our priorities.
Okay.
So we're going to do some more homework for you, we will get what you asked for and for that paving piece.
Okay.
Okay?
Then, Marc, do you want to ask about the lighting and the rebates?
Are you going to segue into the lighting and the rebates and the unit ventilators? They want to know where we are with those projects.
So.
Which ones?
The unit ventilators.
The unit ventilators at TBS, we originally purchased, I believe, 12, and how many are left to install?
12 more are sitting in the storage trailer that will be installed this summer, and that top project will be completed.
How many have we put in to date in the district?
We put in eight, 12, we put in 12.
So 12 and, 12 are going in this summer?
Over in the trailer.
And that will conclude?
That will conclude that project and everything in that building. The lighting upgrade is done, and the air conditioning, heating.
The lighting is done.
Lighting is.
The lighting is done.
Have we gotten any rebates that you know of?
We got the 40% back from, well, the town got the 40, so how that lighting worked was, and they approved the lighting project last year.
Right.
So we paid the whole bill, and then, well, you have to order all the stuff in.
Yep.
Through them, the vendor who did the quotes, their electrician installs it, by the time we get our electrician, and then when you get done, well, if the electric does the walk through, and then they take 40% off the money you owe them, so that's how it works.
How come Anthony didn't know that?
I was just going to ask the same thing.
It's, it's, okay, so I'm not even.
That's okay, so.
I'm not going to answer that. So the good news is that lighting upgrade with the LED is in place, it's made a great change. I think what's interesting is the auditorium, I mentioned what we're paying on that monthly, we're also paying a $2,139 monthly fee for upgrading that entire building with mechanicals and with the lighting system, so over time, we're going to pay for that project and get it back with great savings. This is a little different.
$25,000 a year electrical cost savings.
On that.
For Totucket Valley.
John, would you mind coming to our next communications meeting when we're talking about budget, just because I think it's so much easier to just have you there?
Yeah, that's fine.
Because you know the devil in the detail, and we don't.
Yeah, one thing you have to remember what's coming up is the new state mandate, spoke to Martha about it, the new state mandate starting 2024 is, state of Connecticut wants third-party testing and balancing of all your HVAC systems, done by an outside vendor, and they have to file a report to the state. That costs thousands of dollars to do it.
Does come out of COVID?
What's that?
Do we have any friends?
Are you licensed to do that?
I wasn't really, I was kidding.
They won't let you do it, they won't let you, they mock their party, they will not let you.
Yeah, it's checks and balances.
John, you're fired, and then I'll hurry you back in two weeks.
Balancing companies, testing and balancing companies come in, and it takes them usually about two weeks to test and balance your buildings, and they're.
Where are they balancing, the airflow?
Yeah, airflow, everything having to do with your HVAC.
Did this come from COVID?
Is that?
I'm sure.
It probably prompted them to move faster, it was coming down the line, but it probably prompted them to move quicker.
So, John, a brand-new building like the high school would be exempt, I'm assuming?
We would be exempt from the high school because we would have the one-year report from the balancing for this year.
Yeah.
But we'd have to have the intermediate school balance. Jerome Harrison is borderline, I'm trying to get an answer from them right now, whether we have to do Jerome Harrison or not.
Why would we not, so?
Because it may not have the HVAC, Jerome Harrison has only some HVAC equipment and unit ventilators, so it has to meet a criteria. Jerome Harrison's borderline, Totucket Valley, we probably won't have to do, maybe.
When you say thousands, are you saying like 2,000, 10,000, 100,000?
I'm talking like $100,000 a building.
Martha!
I mean, that's ridiculous, though. Tipped a bird in the tail.
Put it this way, the balancing company who just did the high school was almost $300,000.
Oh my God, there's not even anyone breathing in the area.
And that would start in fall of '24, or January '24?
It starts January '24, but because they are so backed up, there's only a certain amount of people to do it, a certain amount of people who quote it, and so many schools ask them, the state said, as long as you have people come in and give you a quote, by the date, it's okay, and then you have to work perform in the following year if you need to. So within that 20, within that 24 year.
Yeah, so kind of be one of the last ones to ask for a quote.
Yeah, so it's coming down the line.
Okay, thank you. That's good to know, that's going to be a budgeting, another budgeting. It's going to be another budget item.
And we're not going to know how much it is till we get somebody in there to tell us what that quote is going to cost.
Okay, that's good news.
Any questions for John about capital that we just went over?
Nope.
And again, as was mentioned by.
Just the homework, just to do the homework.
The council will determine which projects they want to fund.
Yep.
And we go from there. Okay.
Thanks, John.
So just so the rest of the board knows, we had the communication meeting with town council, we went through our old version of the packet because Martha and Scott wanted us as a board to see the new version of the packet. The meeting was really productive, we're going to do another run-through of our budget before the March 28th presentation to the whole kind of town council of all the departments, because we want to make sure we're all buttoned up on all of their questions and there's no surprises there. Kind of like the, you know, our capital, we know what we're looking for, if there's any questions, we're going to come back, John knows about the rebates, like, you know, if there's any other issues, Scott's going to run the new packet down to them tomorrow so that everybody has it, and then they'll ask questions of us, but I might be speaking too soon, but I'm hoping that this year's budget is much smoother than in the past because we're leading up with information, and we're kind of getting the questions answered prior to the night of all of the departments, so.
Yeah, it's worth a try.
Martha, you did a really nice job.
No, I was just going to say, I think, you know, everyone can obviously get a pat on the back for their efforts, but Martha spearheaded, and really, the devil is in the detail, and told the story, and walked through in a very efficient, simplistic way to just really understand why we're at this point and then moving forward, so I want to thank you for your efforts, and the administrative team, that will continue.
Absolutely.
Will continue to, you know, get the requests that you have. So the other one that was the piece with surrounding towns and the dirts.
Hang on one second.
I'm going to pass them.
Do you want to vote on the budget?
Or do you want to? Okay.
Yeah, we can vote on it.
This is for my knowledge and moving forward, but I'm sure I'm going to ask for another piece of information.
Okay, all right.
Something from it, I want to get this.
No, no, do what you wanted to.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the superintendent's 2023-2024 operating budget in the amount of $35,653,355.4. I'll give this to you, Mayor.
Second?
Any discussion? Does everybody know what that dollar amount correlates to? That is the proposed budget, not the status quo budget.
That is including the couple of new positions, the custodian, the business teacher, and a couple of stipends for Branford Intermediate School.
Yep. Roll call vote?
Chairman Papa Holzer?
Yes.
Vice Chair Nafrio?
Yes.
Secretary Siena?
Yes.
Janet Bosalma?
Yes.
Kim Dawson?
Yes.
Victoria Alonso?
Yes.
So thank.
Then for capital, I'll make a motion to approve the superintendent's 2023-2024 capital budget request in the amount of $936,500. capital budget request in the amount of nine hundred and thirty-six thousand, five hundred dollars.
Second?
And then we can let the town council.
Can I ask you to?
You wanna change it?
Yes, but I want you to change it and say.
Limited to items one through five?
Nope, I just want to say pending documentation for item.
The number of items.
Yeah.
On our list. Just five, Jerome.
Jerome, yeah. So if we get the documenta, yes, so.
So I'll amend my motion to approve the superintendent's twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four capital budget request in the amount of nine hundred and thirty-six thousand, five hundred dollars. Pending documentation for our request, number five.
Second?
Any further discussion? Mary, roll call?
Chairman Papa Holster?
Yes.
Vice Chair Nafrio?
Yes.
Secretary Sienna?
Yes.
Janet Bosama?
Yes.
Kim Dawson?
Yes.
Victoria Lanza?
Yes.
Okay. I think that was our main.
Now I can thank the board. Thank you for not only supporting but building and having really healthy dialogue and great recommendations and critiques of what you thought would make it more useful and easy to read. So with every student in North Branford in mind, we thank you on their behalf. That being said, the last piece was something that was asked, charged with. So there's a few pages. At the end, there's some narratives regarding studies and different things that you might be interested, you might not. But the first two pages get down to the numbers, the per pupil expenditure, the ranking and their scores. Dr. Welch, if you want to come up to, you've been sworn in at the table. And then any, anything that you see that might jump out or any explanations of how this is offered.
So you have the two pages, the first being the dirk schools with similar economic background jobs. The second page is the surrounding towns that typically provide you with information on how students perform in testing. Those are the same towns. And then you have the scores for students on smarter balance in both language arts and math and then SAT in both language arts and math. And you can see kind of, you know, there's not a great correlation. There's a lot of meriting towns in the per pupil expenditure. As you expect, you see that our per pupil expenditure is, you know, comparatively low with some of the surrounding towns and we perform on average a lot better than those towns, as you would have expected. And then the last page, I included just some research for your enjoyment on kind of that issue of per pupil expenditure and student performance. It's well documented in educational research.
So the reason why I wanted this done, and Carter, I'm gonna charge you with something else because I'm curious.
Why don't you come to the table?
So often I hear, right, Madison and Guilford do better than North Branford because they're so much funded. They, they pay more per pupil. Well, we know that's not true now, right? Because we have the correlation and you handed me studies that say there's no correlation per, you know, cost per pupil to test scores. So what is the difference? What helps students achieve better? Social determinant of health, what are they? Food, shelter, single-family homes? Like, what is it? Like, has anyone ever done a regression analysis on it?
There's some research on that. There's not a definitive answer. There's all kinds.
But there have to be like top three factors that play over.
There's a lot of research you look at. There's a lot of researchers that do that analysis about the biggest impacts of what student achievement is. They talk about teacher efficacy in students. They talk about professional capability. Those are some of the high ones. But if you look at socioeconomic status, name of the town, I mean, there's a lot of research on that. I wouldn't want to quote it for you right now, but.
So what, I guess what I want to know is what should we look at as a town? Not just curriculum and coaches, but what can we look at to extend that arm to help our community and our students do better? What, what is it? What are we missing? I mean, and I'm not saying our students are doing bad. I don't want anyone to think that. I'm not saying that, but like.
Is that who you're making?
No.
No, I was, I was honestly.
You know, I mean, if you know me and you know, like, I just, I would like to look forward and I like to keep pushing the envelope. And we are, they're doing, I, I see the progress forward, but I would like to take it to the next level. And what, I don't know what that next level is. I know it's not funding work, right? I mean, of course, we need to keep the doors open and be on top of our curriculum and all of that, and we will do that. But what, what other component do we need to add? Or do we need to not add to, to help our students along at the various grades? I don't know what that is. So I'm kind of throwing that at all of you to say, hey, let's brainstorm. It's probably not something we, we're gonna come up with like next meeting, but it's something that when you're doing continuing development and you're bringing in speakers or someone's taking a master's course or a doctoral course, they'll say, oh, my gosh, this is the aha. Let's try this. I'm just, I'm just curious. I really would like North Branford to be on the map for our stellar education. And I don't care we're a blue collar town and I don't care that we have a bunch of farmers and I don't care that we have big mansions. Like, I want to know whether our kids are electricians, they're welders, they're doctors, they're accountants. They are well-educated and they can speak in any forum comfortably. And I just, I want, I want them to graduate with confidence at any level. So that's kind of why I was asking. I was just curious. So.
I want to say that, first of all, in our dirk, for per pupil, we're eighth out of tenth. And our scores are pretty darn good.
And you have to keep in mind, on that dirk, there's only, I think, three that have a high school. And Westbrook has thirty-six kids in their graduate class. So it's skewed and it's, you can do anything you want with data and you can.
But our surrounding towns, we're ninth out of eleven for per pupil. And we're fourth and sixth in one area. I mean, I think that's pretty good. We are making some gains.
We are definitely making some gains. I just, I just wanted to, to take away the myth of like pay work per pupil.
If you look at what you've done in your time here, you brought on the coaching model that we didn't have.
But we didn't do anything. They did.
No, I know, but they don't do it without your support to do this. And so you look at the coaching model, you look at it at a new high school, at middle school that's been updated. There's a number of things that have happened with this board in recent years that, you know, yeah, we all, we want to get better. There's no question about it. There's not a person in this room that doesn't want to improve and get better. And you've done a lot of things. We've made a lot of strides. And there's more work to be done. And we'll be the first ones to sit here and say, roll up our sleeves and we're ready to take on the challenges.
Yeah, so that was really, you know, if you come across anything in your research and anyone for that matter, if there's some, because you know, what's gonna be work for the high school is not gonna work for your little ones, right? Or, you know, the tweens, everyone's gonna need something a little different. I just don't know what that is. And I would really like to broaden our, our scope if we can. Okay.
I think we're done?
I think we're done.
Does anybody have anything else to add?
Do we need another budget meeting? I know we're, we're gonna meet as a communication committee. Does anyone want a budget meeting after that? Or do we, can we just bring it up at the board event meeting? Is that okay?
Perfect.
All right.
I'll make a motion. We didn't schedule yet.
Before March twenty-eighth.
So March twenty-eighth is the day we believe that we will.
We present.
And you know what, guys? When, when we present, it's really, if you can make it to the meeting, it's kind of important. If we show sol, if we show solidarity, if everybody can come. March twenty-eighth at the town council chambers, if, if everybody can try to be there, I mean.
I think it's a Tuesday.
Show solidarity that we all back it, you know, at different times.
We're up first.
So it's, yeah.
You know, in the past, and I'll throw this out, we have had the chair and vice chair present the budget through the PowerPoint.
Happy to.
We're saying, I'm asking you that live on television.
Yeah, I'm happy to.
If you, we could get together collectively, go through it and have our.
I'll be your Vanna White.
Presenting what we do. The two of you would present it. We'd be there with you with the administrative team behind us.
Sure, I'm happy to.
Okay.
Do that for a living.
All in favor?
Aye. Motion to adjourn?
I guess I better keep that PowerPoint.
I better start studying that PowerPoint.
All in favor?
Thank you, everybody, for coming out again.
I'm gonna have to do my head and bicep for that, too.
Yes, you are.
All right.